All right, good evening and welcome to the State School Board's regular meeting. Today is Thursday, October 28th, 2021 at 5:30 PM. And we are in the central building, second floor conference room. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, they get a motion to approve my agenda. First and a second, any discussions? All right, hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And welcome to all of our visitors. We have quite the class here tonight, so I hope we'll try to make it as super exciting as possible. And also welcome everyone watching at home on Facebook. And I assume you don't have any emails that I need to read, all right? Anyone is welcome to come to a future meeting. We do have an open forum, or you can send an email to wastigadistrict@gmail.com and I will read that in your open forum session. All right, moving on then to payment of claims. Director Mansell, would you like to make your motion?
I have reviewed the claims for the month of September, and I recommend action of payment for those places. Account payable is for amount $1,927,999 for defense as an included bill, payroll is $880,724.86.
Thank you. First and a second, any discussions? All right, hearing none, then we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimous. Thank you. A motion for the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. All right, we'll move on into our information items and begin with our superintendent report.
Well, good evening. Thank you for the time to visit with you a little bit, Sadab, how things are going, particularly around our strategic plan, which at this time of the year, you know, as, use the analogy, you know, the boat is off the dock and the school year is moving forward. And then really in December and January, we start thinking about 22, 23, thinking about the next school year. So these months here are a time to really focus on the strategic planning, thinking about what we're doing from a big picture perspective and continue to build ourselves going forward. So I've paid for the board. Overall, our vision card process is going well. We've had the opportunity to, as you saw last time, finalize our district card, setting our measures that are going to be tied directly to our operational plan and our strategic plan. And so moving forward with those goals, some things I'm going to mention here in the next couple of bullets will be things the board will be hearing about in the next few months in terms of progress on some of the vision card goals. Our building leaders and department directors are also now finishing up their department and building vision cards for this school year. We begin next week with our line one fall. There are coaching, goal-setting, evaluation meetings that I meet with each director and principal. And at that point, they'll be sharing with me their department or building card. After that, they'll be working with their individual staffs to potentially create grade level, job-like vision cards from there, all about setting goals for this school year. So I'm looking forward to, much as we mentioned in our work session, the updates now, once we get moving on those vision cards, are a lot more results-oriented and progress versus just the process of, hey, we've been working on this. What has that accomplished? So I'm really looking forward to that in the next few months. In terms of updates on our areas, focus areas thus far, in the area of student achievement, we have an important meeting coming up next month, our DAC meeting, our District Accountability Advisory Committee, looking at our assessments for the fall, looking at some of the things that we found from the spring in terms of student achievement, and how we're doing on our World's Best Workforce Report, which we'll report that to the board in at our November board meeting. So we'll meet with the DAC committee before the November meeting. If you recall, in the years past, we would have done that in the December meeting with Truth and Taxation, with audit reports, and with all the, it just kind of adds up. So, and it actually is due to the date, the 15th of December. So we're going to do it in November at this time of the year. That should help us talk through some of our academic successes at this point. Another piece of student achievement, as we talked about this summer, we've talked a little bit this fall, graduation rate is something that we're always looking at. You know, the way that our graduation rate is reported is a little bit confusing because we talk about our junior, senior high schools accomplishing. We also talk about the great work that is happening at our ALC. When that gets combined, sometimes that percentage can be without the context of the full story of all of our students getting what they need to be successful in life. So I've been working with some communications with the Department of Education about how we can clarify that story so people understand what our students are doing, what the progress is that they're making. Because for each individual student in a personalized path, we're doing very, very well. And so we don't want a metric without context to tell our story for us. So we're using, making some progress in that area. In the area of student support, we know it's one of the board's goals this year to keep our radar on mental health of students and staff. So in the HOJ connect times, as well as current connecting with our behavior and emotional support staff, we're trying to provide options for students to receive that support when they need it, as well as staff. I think MEA came at a really nice time, as it always does. It's a nice, nice time for us all to get some refresh, refreshing time for ourselves because we go hard those first six weeks, getting into our routines, getting into our school year. And I think especially this year, what we learned was the routine was off last year for all of our students and our staff. And so one thing that was interesting that I heard today from a student at our junior, senior high was we can tell the staff is stressed too. We can tell that everyone's working hard right now and everyone's doing the best they can. So between our students and our staff, we're all working very carefully for each other. And that's really important right now. I think that as a community, a HOJ community, we're moving forward strongly and to that natural excitement in the student support area. In the workforce area, negotiations with our employee groups are continuing to move along nicely. We're continuing to negotiate with our currently active with our teacher group. With meetings coming up again here in the next few weeks to move that process forward. We've also met with our technology group, and we've got, looking at some calendar dates for other groups as well, we're going to continue to support them and also making sure that we use our fiscal resources responsibly, but also improve our contracts for our staff and make sure that they're being honored for the work that they're doing. Hiring for most staff at the end of October, beginning of November, were settled in for this school year. We do have pair openings, and that's going to be, much like it was last year, that's kind of an ongoing narrative of continuing to support that hiring process in our community. If we know people who are looking for support kids and would like to do a rewarding job working with our students, we do have pair openings that we're looking to fill. That's probably the biggest challenge right now. And we're not immune to the substitute issue like any district is right now. We fortunately have very strong attendance with our staff. Our staff come to work and come to work ready for kids. So we're not having an issue as much as some of our neighbors are, fortunately. But we know that we want to support our substitutes as best we can too. And our students too. I've heard some comments from students and substitutes, our students take really good care of themselves. They're really kind and following their routines and helping them along. So I would thank you to our kids as they support those guest teachers themselves in their room too. Community engagement continues to move along too. Facilities Task Force begins here later in November. We have about two-thirds commitment for roles filled on that already, with a few more key roles to fill in the next few days. I will send that roster to the board here when that's finalized in case there's somebody else that I haven't quite connected with yet or we haven't got an opportunity to get engaged. It was on Facebook, it's on our website. Will be next week. If we still need some spots, we might engage through our parent portal. Although right now, parent response is our strongest response. So if there's community members right now who would like to be part of that, who are not engaged necessarily with kids in the school, please reach out to me and we'll be able to support in that area. As I reach out with several of you individually to see if there's other folks that you know and recommend, that will happen over the next couple of days. But looking forward to that process getting moving and having some feedback from our community on where we could go next with facilities. Along that line also, I'll be getting with the November meeting. So I think that if I did the math on the calendar correctly, before Thanksgiving, be November 19th, I think is that Friday, that would be my next pop with superintendent. And I'll be at the Pheasant that morning for a couple hours just to visit with whoever might be interested in speaking. And the next month, we'll pick out a location and we'll get around the community for some breakfast, you know, the second or third Friday of the month, depending on what holidays fall in different areas. So I'm looking forward to, again, more conversation with that. And then finally, just in our area of academic and teaching and learning, you know, our career pathways program is continuing to make progress with setting up opportunities for students to personalize their learning at our high school particularly, as I work with Clint Link and Jason Miller, and then a lot of our community manufacturing partners, a meeting today, that Clint was able to lead with the Region Nine and our city, our county, the IRI institutions, for how we continue to support career pathways for students. Our goal is, as we've mentioned before, this spring's registration guide. We have some more alignment in our registration guide for, if I'm interested in this particular career field, these are the courses I should be considering throughout the course of my high school journey and not pigeonhole to a certain area because some of them will overlap. But I'm looking forward to that, that process continuing to evolve. I've been really impressed with our staff's willingness to jump in that and promote those opportunities for kids when we get to that point. So I think that we are, we already offer, I just saw it today, Mrs. Weeks just had the opportunity to send it over to me today. We offer the classes. It's just a matter of aligning up so students know what the opportunities could be for them if they're interested in a particular field. We just had a contractor reach out to us today, ask about job shadow. So our community, I think, is starting to get the message that we're should be partnering as much as we can for careers for kids, particularly in some of those areas we always think of. And so I'm excited about that opportunity as well. So that's, I try to keep it as brief as I can. I know at this time of the year, we all have lots going on. Volleyball game tonight too, but we're all excited to get to. But any questions on that, I would be happy to answer them now.
Just any, I think we've kind of talked about the junior, senior high a little bit. Any highlights at our case exhibitions that you can think of that you want to share? Last year, we had a lot of focus on the junior, senior high.
Sure, sure.
Anything you want to add?
Yeah, I think the field trips have been kind of exciting. As I was visiting Hartley last, last week or the week before, it felt kind of fly it down the one hallway because they're like a zoo. So I figured out what that was going on. But, and then opportunities to support our students who are coming into, into school who have really been impacted by that gap. I mean, Mr. O'Brien's working hard with the students, particularly, I think, if I remember correctly, those students in that first, second grade window who had kindergarten, first grade, a little different. Now we're figuring out what first and second grade looks like. And they're doing great, their staff is amazing. But at regular meetings, we talk about supporting staff. Conferences went well at WIS last week. Our staff was able to support that, as well as, I think, there's some kindergarten meetings happening this week to bridge the gap between entrance conferences and the fall conference which happened later this November for Hartley. So a lot of activities going on there as well, settling into our routines as well.
Any other questions? Thank you for the updates. Move on then to our report from Elizabeth Berry.
Thank you for your time this evening. As you can see, we're starting to get back in the swing of things and we're starting to look at expenditures. So this is something that we will have on our agenda from now through the end of the fiscal year again. And what we like to do is we take a snapshot of a month in time in the current year and start to compare them to prior years, just to make sure that our budget and our expenditures and our revenues are trending the way that we think that they should, or if there's something that maybe looks out of place, really being able to drill down to it. And most of the time, it's really just a timing issue. So the two key areas that I focus on when I'm looking at these reports are specifically our salaries and our benefits. Those, again, shouldn't fluctuate much and it makes up about 75% of our budget. So that's where most of our operations live. And so when I'm looking at those from year to year, those are the two areas that I really do hone in on. And as you can see with those reports that we're presenting for expenditures, those really are in line with the way that we've budgeted and where we've been at expenditure year-to-date. So again, this is just a snapshot of a September 30th look back of current year and then two prior years, depending upon which report you're looking at. So very happy with where we're at. This also helps us build our budget revision, which would be coming up mid-year. But also, as Eric had mentioned, you know, also looking to fiscal year '23, what does that look like for our budgets? And so this is just a very helpful tool for us to look at current year as well as build following year as well. Revenues, we'll have those on the board agenda next month. There's still a few audit entries that we're working through. And I want to be able to give you a report that's readable and understandable. So that will be on the school board agenda for next month as well. And we'll start taking a peek at where we're at year-to-date revenue versus prior years. Okay? Any questions with this information at all? Okay, I'm going to put something on your radar. I always like to mention it, especially with MSBA coming up. I know it's January, but it's going to be here before we know it. And I'm very excited for you guys to be able to go to the conference again. These comparison reports actually came out of a suggestion from a school board member. Gosh, it's probably been 10 years or so ago. But they had seen this at the MSBA conference and said, hey, is this something that Wasika Public Schools could do? So I'd just like to put it on your radar. If you see some really great things at MSBA, that's a really good time to look at, you know, what are other districts doing? If you have suggestions for me, happy to take a look to see if that's something that could work for Wasika. The other report that we have listed is our monthly enrollment report. And so as you can see, it's trending just as we normally would. So I, our enrollment is down compared to prior years. But I do want to reiterate, we have been projecting declining enrollment over the past, I guess, I'm trying to think, probably again, 10 years. We've been projecting declining enrollment. Things that we look at to help us predict that is our birth counts. So we look at birth to four-year-old counts. What is that number potentially going to be coming into kindergarten? So that helps us kind of figure out what our enrollment may be for the following years. We had a demographic study done. It's been quite a while, but at that same time, we do reference it because, again, it was an outside source. And they also projected declining enrollment, just again, based on our birth counts. What is the trend for Wasika County and looking at our surrounding counties as well? So as you can see, September down to October did take another slight decline, but again, very much in sync with what we've done in prior years. So I just, I want to mention that it's right in line with where we've built the budget. That's another thing to please keep in mind is that we were projecting this. But it will be something that we continue to watch because where we projected is really where we're at right now. So we'll continue to monitor that. And again, this is just another tool that we use to shore up our current budget as well as look to budget for next year. What does that look like for our general ed date overall? And then, you know, what do we need to do to potentially right-size to fit our student enrollment?
Thank you. Any questions for Elizabeth? Awesome, as always. Yes, the graphs that you use are really, are very useful. So I can't imagine we'd find something that would be even more useful, but definitely we'll keep our eyes.
I appreciate that, thank you.
All right, we'll move on then to committee and board member reports. Scott, you want to start us off? Go around to your panel.
I sure can. So finance, we've talked a lot about the levy and where that stands. We have two points in different points of it. And then, facilities was mostly about the task force. And for facilities task force, I understand it's down to three quarters. That's nice to see. And kind of, what kind of people, what kind of groups are represented in that? And making sure that we have everybody, everybody has a buy-in, or not buy-in, but a seat at the table. So, and then personnel, we've talked a lot about the parents and the families there. Otherwise, there wasn't a whole atmosphere at the personnel committee. And insurance and safety was, most of the meeting was about insurance and insurance costs.
Which have increased.
Yep, yep, they did increase because it's normal in what's going on in our society. So it's not anything, it isn't, it isn't normal.
It's been a busy month.
Yes, yes. So that's all I got.
All right, thank you. Yes.
I was a part of the negotiation committee and we met around that with the teacher unions and we actually proposed that with the group that represented Gary. It's a lot of learning for me. And then I was part of the committee and we met beginning of October. And I think after one year to be just online, it was good to be in person and see the teachers. It was a very vibrating meeting. And I think, not a frustration, but you know, teachers, they need to adjust after last year when they have Monday off and they have time for their development stuff. They don't have it. It's a little bit, what do we do? How we can accomplish what we're supposed to do? And it's a little bit, I cannot say frustration, but you know, like, how we can achieve what we need to achieve. And they have great ideas and it was really good to be there. And they have concerns that when they have busy day, they should not have staff meetings. You know, it should be really there, they're all there. They are working on it and we'll meet next month.
Okay, because it's different this year since we changed it early out to a full day. So yeah, things are a little different. So I'm sure there's adjustments all around.
And more to be more accessible and maybe have time for their development.
Thank you.
As part of finance meeting, but Scott told me that quite well. And the insurance and safety, I'd only add into that, but I guess the people who were presenting there really spent a lot of time talking about all the things that they had tried to do to look at other options because no help. Insurance costs are going up, but they spent a lot of time saying, well, what can we do about it? What's this, can we do with that? As much as it's helpful for everybody to follow that, Phil, I think they're working hard to make sure we're doing the best we can. Lot of, lot of. Yes, yes. So that was in committees. Kind of related to that also, I was, did get a chance to go on a field trip with the Great History Fest, and that was real fun to see the kids learn things and see them have that experience. Have that in the feedback, that was great.
Eliza, what's going on?
So we have our football game Saturday night, and the football team is having breakfast at the Boat House on Saturday morning. And the band's practicing for the indoor. The choir has their show tomorrow night. And there's the volleyball game tonight. And FFA, they're on their convention right now.
And today is Liza's birthday, so.
Oh, it is.
Thank you so much for giving us your time today. All right, Charlie.
Yeah, I think Eric talked about, talked about negotiations. That seems to be going well. And just to pick up a little on the health and insurance committee meeting. Green did talk about the safety aspects. Air quality is excellent in the schools, so radon testing, but no, no concerns there. There's an underground storage tank removal. He says he hopes to close the books on this one. So, and then I think that, I think that's kind of the highlights. And of course, the insurance, insurance cost, you know, what's going to happen for next year. So that's all part of the negotiations too. So I think that's it.
I had policy, facilities, personnel, most of it's all been covered quite well. I did want to mention at the personnel committee meeting, Eric did talk a little bit about the Southwest, our, working with Southwest West Metro for our Level Four Special Needs Program in students. And that is something new, or how we're doing it is new and that it's working quite well so far, so good. So that's a good thing to hear.
Dave and I were part of the outdoor classroom committee.
Oh, yeah.
That was really fun. It was a really energetic meeting. You had Dave Abel and Savannah Zimpel, and they're so excited about the DNR classes that they're looking at doing out there. And then John Stensel's son was part of the, yeah, Jason was part of it. He's out at the, or not, extension office. Yeah, and then we had Jeff Jensen, who works out at the high school. He talked about Minakwa, which is a DNR program. Oh, it's, they have programs that are already made up for teachers.
Yeah.
And a lot of good information in that meeting. It was really neat to see brains coming into a collaboration and all and bouncing ideas off of each other. So it's going to be exciting to see what comes of this.
Well, I see how this is a simple resolution by the board can open up a whole, a whole slew of opportunities that we, that, I mean, it's not like we weren't using that space, but now we can use it even more so, which is really awesome. So, oh, thank you. And I think almost everything, almost, I would have personnel, negotiations. Didn't even talk about superintendent evaluation. We did have that meeting also, where really Eric just reviewed his progress so far. He is making progress on Daniel Holtz and that's good. Oh, and Lindsay, our other school student council rep couldn't be here tonight, but Eliza, you did a great job covering almost everything she wanted me to cover for her. So volleyball game tonight at seven. This is the first playoff game and that's where she is tonight also. So we want to go share on Lindsay. She would love to have lots of people there. First choir concert tomorrow. The marching band is preparing for the indoor concert, which will be November 11th, 12th, and 13th, and the title is Wonderful World. And then cross-country team had their section meet tonight. So excited to see how the boys and girls teams did. I believe the girls team is favored to go to state, so that'd be exciting if they do. Football team, the football game is Saturday, and then FFA, yeah, they're on next. Without Eliza, you guys totally are on the same page. All right, so that is the end of our committee reports. We can go on then to recognitions and positive board feedback. And yeah, we'll start us off.
Sure. I just, I think it's wonderful to be able to watch our football team still and the resilience that they've shown over the year with what happened earlier. But not only just the football team, all the sectionals and possibilities for state that we have, it's exciting to see. That's all I got.
I think I would like to say thank you to Wasika Football Association for their program. And in January, a couple weeks ago, I think it was very successful even. I just thank you for the coaches and everybody who was involved in this project. And also, we had the new lights and crosswalk done and it's very bright. Beautiful.
Yes, thank you. Grant.
I wanted to actually recognize the staff of the band program, and specifically Mr. Lawrence, because he unexpectedly had to quarantine for two weeks at the last moment before one of their competitions. So I think that kind of maybe threw everybody off, but the rest is, tribute to his program. Very organized, the rest of the staff kicked in, did their thing, all the band students. Okay, we'll keep going. So everything went very well, very smooth, without a hitch, in spite of adversity. So good job.
Eliza, do you want to?
I was going to say football, they pretty much covered that. Open it up to all of the different teams going on to their sections and everything.
Charlie.
I would just like to say congratulations to all the teams in the band program and teachers and everybody who's really taken it this year and really making it, making a good experience for everybody. Growing and marketing.
I was trying to think of something a little different than I was at home the other night. And I pulled out my copy of the activity calendar and I was looking up dates for East of Oregon, mentioned the choir concert, ball playing, and the indoor marching band concert. And I thought about recognizing all the advertisers that actually make this possible. There's, you know, quite a few advertisers in here, but I'm just going to mention the vain ones. Itron, Domino's, Round Bank, First National Bank, McDonald's, and the different restaurants down in the Miller Armstrong Building. That, you know, this is pretty neat to have and anybody can have. That, you know, this is pretty neat to have and anybody can have one or two or whatever copies of this and you don't pay anything for it. We, we've been doing this for a long time to support the marching band and all the different activities we have at school. So just want to say thank you to all the advertisers and the different businesses and groups and individuals that make this possible.
Thank you. Katie, um, I'd just like to say it's nice to see some of the teachers being able to spend time away from teaching when they were over ME and weekend. And some of this has been going on, like Joe Kuscha would be an example, that he does his woodworking, um, projects off of the school time. And it's good to see that they feel comfortable enough that they can go back to some of their hobbies and they're taking care of themselves. So it's nice to see.
I agree. Um, I have a couple of things I wanted to talk about. One was, um, the grand opening of the Highway 13 crosswalk, which is, the grand opening is Monday, but obviously people have already been using it. But I just want to say that that's, that project, um, I think I've been on the board for about six years and that has been a six-year project. Um, and a big thank you to our previous superintendent, Tommy, who really helped get that going, uh, with a collaboration with the city, with the county, uh, region nine. And I remember when they, when they did the study for traffic outside our schools and the region nine coordinator was like, I have never seen a school that needs a crosswalk because having it, he just couldn't, he was blown away with, um, the non, the non-safety of getting, getting our kids to school. Um, so the fact that that is finally happening is, is just, is awesome. So, um, but Katie and I are both on that safety and justice school committee and that was, um, it's just great to see that accomplished.
Can I add, can I add something to that? For us old timers that have been around for a while, I can remember, although I was quite young at the time, um, when the high school was built and there was talk way back in the early seventies about how are we going to have a safe way of crossing Highway 13 now that we built the new high school on the north edge of town? The high school was built in 1972. So this project literally, and I'm not exaggerating, literally has been worked on and talked about for 50 years. It seems incomprehensible, but.
And I also wanted, I know people have a lot of ideas about how we could have accomplished this crosswalk, but this is, this is the, the pretty much the only logistical way to get this safe crossing. And so it's, it's just so awesome to see it finally happen. Um, so, and so Monday, November 1st is supposed to be a walk or ride your bike to school day. So anyone that's able to do that, take advantage of that crosswalk and our other crosswalks that we have and routes to get to school. So that's kind of a fun thing. Uh, but I also wanted to recognize, um, Mr. Colin Green, who received, uh, the 2021 Outstanding Contributor Award from the Minnesota Educational Facilities Management Professional Association. Sounds powerful. Uh, but he is our director of building and grounds. And what I find really cool about this award is it's a reminder that a school district has people who are educators in lots of different roles. And so he's, he's in charge of our buildings and grounds, but he's just as important for the education of our students as our teachers and our, our paras and, um, but everyone that contributes to that is, is, is valuable. So, but that was a really cool award and he, um, very, very deserving.
He talked about that when we were brought it up to him, that they, how did they do? They nominated him without him knowing about it. It was a real big surprise for him.
Yeah. It's just, it's really neat that an organization like that, it's, it's about facilities, but it's educational facilities. I really think that that's a, I think he definitely deserves that recognition. All right. Um, awesome, awesome things going on in the district right now. So we're ready to move on then to our action items. Um, I want to commend all the students that are here tonight who picked a really short agenda night to, uh, to come to their school board meetings. So good job everyone. You may not realize that, but last month it was like almost the entire alphabet. So, um, all right. So can I get a motion then for our, approve our acceptance, acceptance of received gifts and donations, item A.
I'll make a motion. We accept the gifts as still in our name.
Okay. I think a new vote first though. We have a first and a second, any discussion?
Resolution.
So this is officially a resolution, so we'll do a roll call. Just answer yes or no when I call your name. Grant?
Yes.
Adida? Scott?
Yes.
Julie as yes. Katie?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And Charlie?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. And then we're just acknowledging the assurance of compliance of state and federal law. So this is just an annual acknowledgement that the, that the school district is complying all the ways that they're supposed to. So.
Right, exactly. It is something that we have to submit to the Department of Education each November. We have, we're in compliance with federal and state law in terms of discrimination, in terms of supporting all of our staff and students, mandatory reporting, harassment and all those pieces that we do each year with all of our staff and our new hires as well. So this has evolved over the years to, um, you know, a formal board action to now it's an online form that, after the board has acknowledged it, we'll, we'll click a few buttons and we'll move ourselves through because we've done the works list. You have to do the work first, which we've done. So we're in good shape for that. So yeah, right, it's a annual thing that we just see at this time.
All right. Um, moving on then, can I get a motion for item C?
I'll make a motion to approve requests to dispose of outdated in the English textbooks.
First and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, then we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. I get a motion for item D.
I'll make a motion. We approve the additional fundraiser for the Spanish book.
First and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. I get a motion for item E.
I move that we approve the food service contract with race card child.
First and a second, any discussion?
It's the same as it was, it's just a, a little bit. It, it is, the only difference in the contract would be a 10 cent increase to meal price just to mirror what we've done in the district. Now, it's all free, but in terms of mirroring our meal price, um, that is free for the district, I should say. Uh, but we mirror the same price for our contracts as well.
Yeah. Cause yeah, cause at some point we'll have to go back to, well, maybe we have to charge you. So we have to keep, yeah.
Right, but we want to kind of catch up. So making incremental changes along.
Yep. For the discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. I get a motion for item F.
I'll make a motion. We approve the review policies, which would be 418, Form 418, 419, 420, 421, 422, 423 and 425.
First and a second, any discussion? Pretty straightforward. Most important one there is gifts to employees and school board members, which is basically none. All right. There's no further discussion. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And that brings us to the end of our action items for today's meeting. Um, upcoming items reminders, in addition to all the many activities that are going on in the next few weeks, as I mentioned earlier, our next work session is next Thursday already, uh, November 4th. And then our next regular meeting is Thursday, November 18th. And if there's nothing else, I get a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion for adjournment.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Now I'll enjoy a treat from Eliza, which is totally not a gift. Do you need anything from me?
I do not. I don't think anything too crazy has to go tonight. I'll send the contract back to Rob's. He'll sign it. Recording.
You're all right.
Recording.
Oh, my goodness. What's the question?
Rather than licking them off.
Do any students need papers signed or are you guys good?
Oh, I need it. Are these in the tines as well?
Yes. I've got it.